One, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for a short prayer and a salute to our flag? Almighty God, grant us the wisdom to make those decisions that are in the best interest of all of our residents. May the Heavenly Father of us all bless those who have given the ultimate sacrifice and service to our nation, and may He watch over and protect our service men and women now guarding the gates of freedom. Salute to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Jessica, notice of publication?
A special meeting has been advertised in accordance with Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975.
Roll call.
Councilpersons, Balka, Lisi.
Here.
Novak.
Yeah.
Roberts.
Here.
Zabrowski.
Okay, councillor, if you would.
Thank you, Mayor. Just before we move on to the resolution, oh, sorry, I'm not on. Before we move on to the resolution, I just wanted to address the council. After the last council meeting, I was directed to prepare a resolution authorizing a non-binding referendum, whether to put out to the public whether Block, the property identified as Block 252, Lot 2, should be moved from the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan that was adopted by the zoning, excuse me, the planning board and endorsed by the council, which has been submitted to the Affordable Housing Program in connection with the township's Affordable Housing Compliance for the fourth round. While drafting that and discussing with the borough planners, which is representatives here, Dan Levin, I started getting some concerns about this resolution and the referendum, and I just wanted to bring those concerns to the council's attention before they moved on the resolution. One of those concerns is the fact that, just as I said, we are in the middle of a litigation. It's not tech, it is a, it's supposed to be an alternative dispute program that was established by the Fair Share Act that was part of how the fourth round is being, compliance is being pursued with, but it is, it's a litigation. It's a complaint that was had to be filed with the courts and through the program, and it's an order that we're seeking from the court for compliance with our mandatory obligation as well as how we're going to actually provide for the affordable housing through the various mechanisms which was adopted in the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. And my concern and the reason why I wanted to raise this is that by putting out this referendum, and this is just my legal opinion, but I feel that this would potentially undermine our case with the program, with any objectors that would file against our plan, which their deadline to file objections is the end of August, August 31st. And I don't want to get into litigation strategy here in open session because, like I said, this is a litigation, but by putting this out there, it is second guessing our own plan that was already adopted by our planning board. And that can put us in a precarious situation in the courts and opens up a legal argument against us potentially when we go forward with the program. As I mentioned at the last meeting, this plan can be amended at any time, and it is a planning board document, but it would be my recommendation that any amendment to this plan not be done until after we get our order from the court, where we're now protected. We have an order that says that we're in full compliance with our fourth round obligations and that our Housing and Fair Share Plan is approved and that we have protections against builders remedy lawsuits. Once we have that in place, then if we want to, the borough wants to look at taking a property out or coming up with other mechanisms, we still would have to go back to the court to do so, any amendment to get approval for that, but we have our order in hand. We are protected. It's not going to be left open where if we don't get our order because of something that might happen along the way, that then we're open to those builders remedy lawsuits because we never actually got that protection put in place. That is my one, my main concern with this referendum when I started thinking about it and putting it together. The other concern I have is whether or not we even, the borough has the authority to go forward with this. Under the referendum law, the borough is only, or any municipality is only allowed to go out for non-binding referendum on something that's within its jurisdiction. The Housing Element and Fair Share Plan is a planning board document, not a municipal, not a governing body document. That means it's the planning board which is a separate legal entity from the governing body and the borough itself. It's their document. So I have concerns that if this does get adopted and gets sent to the county clerk, whether or not the county clerk would even accept it because of the fact that it's the county clerk's determination as whether or not it is a compliant referendum. And as I, you know, just wanted, I just want to make sure that the council's aware that I do have concerns that it could be, even if adopted, it could be rejected by the court because it is a separate legal body. And it's not technically under the jurisdiction of this governing body. And I just wanted to point out, we also have our planners here who, you know, also I spoke to this about, and while I did, you know, I just want to make sure everyone's here is aware. I prepared the resolution. It's before the governing body tonight, and I believe the resolution I prepared addresses what was approved by, or what I was directed to at the last council meeting, but I wanted to raise my concerns and if we can, Mayor, maybe allow the planners to speak.
Before the planners, would you go over what builder's remedy is and what the difference is by the Sayerville Planning Board doing this fourth round or having it revert to builder's remedy?
A builder's remedies lawsuit is a lawsuit filed by a developer, property owner, who wants to build affordable housing, but is in its claim, it's usually in an area that doesn't allow it or doesn't have the density that they want to build. So what they do is they file an action in the court against the municipality, saying that the municipality didn't comply with its affordable housing obligation. Right now, we're starting the fourth round, so it would be our fourth round obligation. And then they will seek for approval or an order from the court allowing them to build what they're proposing. And I can tell you, every single builder's remedy case that I'm aware of always resulted in a much, much larger density and overall development than the borough or any municipality really wanted to do so in the first place. So it ends up if, you know, we only really need to build, you know, 20 affordable housing units, which would equal to 100 market rate units if it was, you know, 20% set aside. If it went through a builder's remedy, that could end up being closer to 200 or even higher because the court actually is punishing the municipality because when they find it, an award against municipality in the builder's remedy lawsuit, it's finding that the borough or any municipality failed to meet its constitutional requirement for affordable housing. So that is what you'd be facing if we don't get this order of protection from the court by going through the process.
Okay, with that, I'll call the planners up, please, to give their reports.
Good evening.
If you'd identify yourselves, please.
Peter Van den Kuy, licensed, Peter Van den Kuy, licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, borough planner and also planning board planner. And I just have, like, I'd just like to say just real quickly, I didn't have like a detailed presentation necessarily, definitely, you know, I'm here mostly for Q and A, but I do have some remarks just to say that we were kind of, we agree with what Joe has said, and we would like strongly recommend that the borough obtain that court compliance status before doing anything. And you could go in either direction, I mean, really, whatever the borough chooses to do, but that would be, I think, most protective of the borough. And then in the interim, there are like some considerations. I think Dan has some details as well, but just to kind of, kind of give you some highlights, you know, so if the borough did choose to remove that site, we'd have to find alternative sites, and that could be done in several different ways, but it could also be challenging because there's limited amount of land left at a borough. So that's something that we probably want to take a little time and think about and take a look at, but there are some repercussions there in terms of, like, there's 100% affordable housing sites. I know they're not always the best option in terms of, you know, if you spread the housing out throughout different developments, you can actually have typically a better result overall in terms of planning, and the regulations actually support that. So there's 100% affordable housing development, special needs and other options, but, you know, if that site were removed, we'd have to find alternative sites. And so I don't know that there's one single other site that we could put those units on, so that's something we'd have to take a look at. So I just wanted to put that out there. There's, you know, some kind of, you know, that's at least something we'd have to deal with down the road.
Thank you.
Dan Levin, I'm also a licensed planner at Acuity. Pretty much, I would echo exactly what Peter has said and what Joe has said in regards to the plan, the site, other considerations. Specific to the site that's in question here, it's a matter of what gets taken away has to be replaced. And Sayerville, as part of its plan, has taken a vacant land adjustment, which already sort of paints a bit more of a spotlight on the borough in terms of analysis. Vacant land adjustments identify that there is not enough vacant land within the municipality in order to meet its obligation, and so the number of affordable housing units gets revised down. This is already after Sayerville has agreed to a reduction from the state's determination figure as part of the, I believe it was a consent order signed by the judge and in partnership with Fair Share Housing that had brought the number down previously. So we had a reduction that was passed by the resolution and then a further reduction through the vacant land adjustment. So there's already a bit more potential scrutiny on the plan as it is from, you know, people who may be interested in objecting and any revisions to the vacant land adjustment upwards. So any challenges to that that go up, saying that the RDP that Sayerville is proposing to meet gets larger. The site in question right now has a cap on the number of units that can be taken for credit because it's an age restricted site. However, as that RDP number goes up, the number of units that can be accepted also goes up. So no additional land would necessarily need to be added. No new sites would need to be added to the plan in order to meet this RDP. No additional sites would need to be, have increased zoning density in order to meet the obligation. This is all in theory, of course, but hypothetically, you know, this site could gain a couple of additional units as that number goes up without having to place an additional strain on the borough. Additionally, any changes to the plan, your give and take becomes one of either land or money. So if this site is ultimately removed, then in order to meet the realistic development potential obligation, other sites will have to be zoned or overlaid to allow for increased housing density to create the amount of housing that this site is proposed to take. If not that, then the alternative is spending money to create units that are either through a 100% affordable project, which usually comes with a donation of land as well as cash in order to make the numbers pencil out at HMFA, or a combination of supportive and special needs housing, which also requires significant subsidies to the operators and potentially a market to affordable program, which are difficult to implement but not impossible. And again, the cost for those is significant. Now, all of this money is available through the trust fund, but that has implications as well, where if the borough decides to go away from the zoning avenue, the strategy that it's taking, it will have to pass a resolution of intent to bond whereby, especially for the 100% affordable project, whereby if, at a certain time that those units are not provided, they don't get their tax credit allocation from HMFA, the borough would have to bond in order to pay for the creation of those units. So it's a significant, you know, risk to the borough financially to swap this site out potentially for 100% affordable project or some other combination thereof. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So with that, if you would read the resolution?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, the public portion.
Oh.
Public portion on the resolution.
Oh, oh, yes, sorry.
Okay, this time I'm gonna open to the public questions or comments on this resolution. Jim, there is a five minute limit, everyone.
Thank you, Mayor. Jim Robinson, Borel Square in Parlin. You know, when Alberto Rios asked about a referendum, the mayor called it political. I just want to give a little bit of history here. Prime was created in 1993 when Donna McCormick was the mayor to limit development. Was that political? I don't think so. In 2003, Republican McCormick and Democratic Mayor Kilpatrick, in a bipartisan effort, called for acquiring and preserving the 40 acres. Was that political? He'd been out of office 30 years and she wasn't running again. I don't think that was political. In October 2023, when Donna Roberts made the motion to get the appraisal, to get the ball rolling, to acquire this property, I don't know. Was that political? And by the way, Mayor McCormick asked me to thank you, Mary Novak and you, Dan Balka, for doing the right thing on this, and I hope that after tonight, we can thank the rest of you. But I'll tell you what's political. When the mayor creates a secret dark money committee and appoints the chair of that committee as the chief of staff at a $92,000 taxpayer paid position, that's political. When a law firm donates $10,000 to that fund, Patriots for Progress, and three months later is appointed the borough attorney, that's political. When an excellent Sayerville-based engineer who's been our attorney for 40 years and employs hundreds of Sayerville residents is replaced by an Ocean County firm with ties to the GOP chairman, who but for a presidential pardon, would be in jail for corruption, that's political. The last meeting, the mayor told the members of the council how to vote on this motion. That's political. When the attorney for the developer building condos at Costa Verde tears down, where they torn down thousands of trees, sues not to have to contribute to the tree bank to replace those trees, then donates money to the mayor's political account, that's political. When we can't resolve a Bus Depot suit because the mayor won't talk to the Board of Education because the superintendent wouldn't do a favor before the election, that's political. When the council votes against pilots and a new mayor comes in and they change their vote at his request to give away millions of dollars to a mega warehouse developer, that's political. When the chair of the Shade Tree Commission objects to hundreds of thousands of dollars diverted from the tree bank to buy a tractor and that has nothing to do with trees, and then the mayor tries to abolish the Shade Tree Commission, that's political. And by the way, the chair of the Shade Tree Commission and some members that were very active in the campaign to save the firehouse, and then the mayor, aided by the attorney in a routine review, tries to abolish the Shade Tree Commission. Was that political or was that just petty sophomoric spite? I don't know. Saving open space is not political. Protecting our environment is not political. Alberto Rios and Herve Blumer, who asked for this referendum, aren't political. They have never been involved in politics. They came forward to serve because they were disgusted with what has been going on in this town. They saw the trees coming down and the mega warehouses and the condos and apartments going up. That's why they got involved. They never had breakfast or even met the disgraced political figure that the mayor likes to cite, Donna. And they never met Bob Kay either, Mayor. They are just concerned citizens who've had enough. I support affordable housing, but there are better ways to achieve our affordable housing goal. These 250 apartments get us only 22 credits? I don't think even 38. I think we only get 22 credits. We can do better. Pass this question, preserve and acquire this open space.
Are there other questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Ken Olshewski, Sayerville. To the gentleman who talked about a builder's remedy, we're very familiar with that in Sayerville because we've been through that before. And I think the reason we were through that is for the 20 years that the mayor previously had been in office, I don't think there was any affordable housing built in violation of the affordable housing laws. I believe, I believe the law's on affordable housing, one of the effect in like 1975, in the Mount Laurel decision. So somewhere about that, so long before 2000, when the mayor came in, affordable housing laws were in effect, and they were, to my knowledge, they were ignored here. Did we have any affordable housing at Town Lake? I don't think so. Did we have affordable housing at Gillette Towers? I don't think so. Did we have affordable housing at the apartments at Town Lake, which were built later as the result of a court, a court case? The planning board in that case turned down. They turned down the apartments which were going to be built by Kaplan as not age restricted. They turned it down, it went to court, and the court overturned the planning board. But specifically, in that decision to overturn the planning board, the judge specifically mentioned that it had to have affordable housing. And they approved, they approved those apartments in defiance of the judge's order and the affordable housing laws. So we know a lot about laws in Sayerville, and we know how they're violated. I'm, don't get me wrong, I'm not here to advocate for affordable housing. That's not my purpose standing at this microphone here tonight, but I think we have to comply with laws and unfortunately, as I said, Sayerville knows a lot about a builder's remedy. There've been some ugly things happened here, and there's been no excuse for them because a lot of this building going on and everybody in town can see it all over town. That's the result. That's the result of the builder's remedy decision. When they sued, when they sued towns including Sayerville, and it went to the judge and the judge overthrew our zoning laws, and the developers cried, well, we want to build affordable housing. After all those years, were they in a building? And it's not developers' fault. Let me, let me be very clear on that because the developer goes by the document that's approved by the planning board. You know that, Mayor. You're on the planning board, and you exclusively appoint the entire planning board. So the developer goes by that document. So this is not, we're not talking about developers' fault, we're talking about the borough's fault. And unfortunately, that's where we're at. To take, to take now this prime designation of this property in question, that goes back to, I, probably the early 90s, late 80s, early 90s, where that was designated as prime. And it's really important, more important than it was at that time, because we didn't have the building that we see here at that time. So I think, I think we, Mr. Robinson said a lot of it that I could include, but I don't want to be repetitious, but some of the issue here is, as he said, the Shade Tree Commission tried to abolish that here, the Historical Society, with the firehouse, it seems, these were all, these were all issues that, that we're trying to, trying to spite people. And we have something pending for a residency requirement for people to serve on boards. We're gonna put a residency requirement on volunteers who get $0 to serve on boards while we go and hire a mayoral aide from Philadelphia. And the mayor, at the last meeting, almighty closes everything out and starts talking and doesn't allow you to respond, try to equate that to me, that I had to commute to Pennsylvania. And you're right, Mayor, I did. I worked 29 years and I rose to lead a multinational company in New Brunswick to run their distribution center. I worked 29 years and I moved it to Pennsylvania. I don't think you can equate that to hiring somebody from Pennsylvania. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Being no one else, I'll entertain a motion to close the public portion.
I'll make a motion to close the public.
Your second?
Second.
Roll call to close the public portion.
Councilpersons, Roberts. Balka.
Yes.
Lisi.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Zabrowski.
Yes.
Are there any comments from the governing body?
Yes. Um, I guess I would be asking the planner.
You need to speak into the microphone, Eric.
Always been told to. It is on. I just, when I talk that way, I look that way. Mayor, I'd like to ask some questions of the planners. Is that all right with you?
Yeah. Ask the attorney or the planner.
When you were doing your calculations.
If you would take to the mic, please.
I am talking right to the mic. Oh, I'm sorry. I was just wondering, did you, did we get any credits for the American Recovery Housing for Substance Abuse on Ernst &amp; Road? Did you look into that?
Those don't qualify for credits.
Okay, how about using, we used to do this years ago, CBGD grants. We rehabbed houses and then they were able to be qualified for.
The CDBG funds for rehabilitation get you rehabilitation credits, but this is new construction credits. Those don't translate.
It's gotta be totally new.
Yes, well, it doesn't have to be new, new, but it has, there's enough criteria to say that the CDBG for rehab specifically, the way that that program is administered, do not qualify as new construction credits. That's sort of the broader term. I think that the specific term is prospective need credits under the legislation.
Okay, what about converting, there are some houses in town, quite a few, many, that are illegal to families, and it's usually because there's a relative or something that's can't afford to live on their own. Did we look at going after them and making them, because again, we've done this before. We've looked into that and we got credits for these things.
So if there are two family units that are not operating under the accessory apartment program, they, I believe, should be compelled to comply with the ordinance, but they would not qualify as affordable housing units because they have not been deed restricted for the amount of time, the 30, 30 or 10 years, depending on the amount of time for the program, they wouldn't have been affirmatively marketed, the people living in those units would not have been income qualified. So they would not be considered credit worthy units. There are 10 units for accessory apartments that are in the plan right now, and as your administrative agent and planner, you know, one of the things that we would do upon, you know, approval of the plan is to work to get those accessory apartments, you know, that accessory apartment program moving. But current duplexes that are not licensed or not registered or what have you would not qualify today, and it also wouldn't be enough to make up the difference that we're talking about.
This was something, I have no idea whether this can be done, but Winding Woods, is there any way that we can subsidize a number of their apartments to be turned into affordable housing? Right now, they're considered market rate, but quite a few of the people are on Section 8. You know, they're already built.
The short answer is yes, through a market to affordable program. That would require a lot of research and it would require a lot of money, potentially. The going rate for a market to affordable unit is on the order of $100,000 or more for a conversion to the landlord, and it depends on the difference between what the market rate is and what the maximum UHAC affordable rate is. It doesn't matter necessarily if somebody has a voucher because the federal government makes up the difference to the market.
No, no, that I understand. I'm just saying, work with them to make maybe, you know, one section of their apartments, you know, and make it that way. I mean, did you check into that? I mean, rather than taking something and rezoning it to make it housing when it's not zoned that way?
Mayor, well, before the planners, just on that note, I just want to raise one point, that the current regs that are, the UHAC regs that are being proposed, previously a municipality could do that, and we weren't obligated to actually make any minimum amount of payment for that. Under the contemporary regs, we're required to make a minimum payment of $17,500 for each unit, but under the new regs, exactly as Dan was saying, it's actually based upon a percentage change, but they've upon a percentage change, but they've increased it exponentially. They're actually, the new regulations that are being proposed, and I, I know the league is fighting against it, uh, a lot of the municipal attorneys are fighting against it, but it actually makes it exponentially harder to do exactly what you were bringing up, is, is to convert these, uh, market rates to affordable, which is, makes no sense to me, because that, wouldn't you think that would be the smarter way to handle it? But the, the new regs that are expected to be adopted, uh, actually make it harder and more, much more expensive. So I just, to, to, I just wanted to echo that, that last response, because it is something that I've been monitoring myself, uh, with regard to where the requirements are moving forward for many municipalities. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to ju- jump, jump on you there.
Thanks, Joe.
Um, some of, some of the questions were, were already answered for me that I have here. Now, let me ask you, uh, I'm hearing this, putting this referendum on there, you know, could throw this whole thing into a tailspin, and then in the same thing, you're saying, doesn't even need our approval, uh, this is up to the planning board. So by us going out and asking the residents what they think, as opposed to, this is a non-binding referendum, I don't see how it can put us in any legal problems here at all, because the planning board can tell us to go pound salt. And so it, nobody can sue us for asking the residents of this town what they think. And in the, you're telling me that this can be changed over time? I mean, you have a piece of property in there right now, that actually belongs, part of it belongs to the New Jersey Department of Transportation, or the Turnpike Authority, I'm not sure. We can't even have that in here. We can't take that and build affordable housing on it, and yet it's in this plan. So if there's legal problems, it seems to me that this plan already has legal problems.
Anything else, Mayor?
Uh, I did have some amendments that I would like to add to this, but I would like to, if this gets passed, I would like to talk about the amendments, okay?
Are there any other comments from the governing body? Comments or questions? Okay, that being said, um, I, I make it a habit not to, uh, play a defensive position. So Ken Oshersky and Jim Robinson and Kennedy O'Brien have a long history going back into the 90s. That being said, at one time, we worked together, one time I worked to elect Ken Oshersky, and Ken Oshersky worked to elect me, as did Jim Robinson, and then we had a falling out. For those who don't pick it up, it's a very personal issue, uh, which I choose not to defend. What I do say is, anyone who feel, I've been doing this, I think I'm in my 22nd year as mayor, and I do it for $105 a week, and I have for 22 years, which is fine, because that was what it paid when I took the job in 2000. So anyone who feels that I'm doing something against the law, uh, I have always said to them, you should go right to the prosecutor, and I have said that to Mr. Robinson and Mr. Oshersky many times, and as of yet, the prosecutor has not contacted me for, uh, any, for me doing anything illegal. That being said, neither myself, Mr. Robinson, or Mr. Oshersky are certified in any land use, where, you know, where the three of us are high school graduates, uh, Mr. Oshersky, I think, is 85, I just turned 72, and Mr. Robinson, I think, hits 70, uh, will hit 70 in a month. Um, and, and what, what, the way I explain it is that I'm here, I represent the past and the present, and I'm trying to keep things in order for those that follow me. So as far as there being no affordable housing, COA, when Governor Christie came in, he put COA on hold, and housing was just a very unpopular thing in Saroval, uh, and the people didn't want, want, want us to do it, so I didn't do it. Uh, it's really that simple. Knowing that at some point, COA would come back as, as governors change, and, and, uh, the laws change. That being said, uh, the other thing that everybody really should consider, if we, if we go down the road of eminent domain, which is taking, the taking of private property, that is a very slippery slope. We have, uh, spoken to Mr. Mako, who is the property owner, and he, and we asked him, would you, would you want to sell it to the borough so that we could preserve it for open space? He said, I purchased this property in the early 90s, and, uh, as he had purchased, and he and other people had purchased these large parcels of land in Saroval, and they land-banked them. Uh, in 2000, uh, the, the property where the Riverton project is going, I think, paid $300,000 a year in property taxes, and that was, I think, is that like 500 acres, John? When it was A, Parcels A, B, and C? Uh, and that's, and that's, that's what it did. Governor McGreevy at the time asked me to meet with NASCAR, because NASCAR was looking to put in a track. I met with NASCAR, because the governor asked me, uh, and, and they told me their business model, and I said, that's not gonna work for the people of Saroval. No matter how many of them are NASCAR, uh, fans, it just was not a good business model for the people of Saroval. All that being said, Saroval is a very desirable location. One of our past, um, borough attorneys who went on to become an assemblyman and assembly speaker was the one who got the Parkway exit and entrance located here in Saroval. Prior to that, it was a circuitous route. So things happen. Um, if, if, matter of fact, uh, it was Joe Cartridge, Alan Cartridge's father, Joe, who wrote a book called Municipal, Municipal Land Madness, I think that's the name of it.
Alan Cartridge.
All right, well, there we go. So the son wrote it, not the father. That being said, he talks about Saroval post-World War II with the returning GIs. Post-World War II, you have, I think it was like 11% of the population returning from war. So let's take, uh, Laurel Park, which is 900 homes, and it was a treed hillside, and they, they leveled off some of the hillside, and they, you know, took out a number of trees, and they built 900 homes, most of them Cape Cod's, if not all of them Cape Cod's, for the returning GIs. And so it went. My stepmother, who grew, who grew up here in Saroval, uh, here on Main Street, told me, when they built the homes behind Borough Hall on, on Major's Pond, she said, the, the people who lived in this section of town were outraged, outraged that these out-of-towners would come into Saroval, uh, and they were very much opposed to it. Every development that I have seen go up in Saroval, people have been against. The thing is, you can't, uh, unless you purchase it. Now, let's get back to this piece of property. So, and my understanding is, is Mr. Mako bought this piece of property around 1990 for about a million dollars. At that time, the borough was running a surplus of a million to a million and a half, for whatever, I remember talking to somebody involved with, uh, politics at that time, and they were gonna use the surplus for, uh, recreation purposes, not open space. So whether it was the property for Town Lake, whether it was this property at Kennedy Park, uh, remember, Kennedy Park was essentially a clay pit, uh, and on the other side of the track was the Crossman Sand Company, where they took the sand and it built the foundation for a good part of the, uh, Parkway. So that, you, you have a history. Matter of fact, uh, my, my stepmother's a Bailey, and the Bailey family sold hundreds and hundreds of acres to Dupont and Hercules at the turn of the 20th century, so that they could build the facilities there. This is just a progression. We didn't purchase it now, it came in under, under my predecessor, uh, the, the appraisal, this is a 40-acre site, it came in at, at under $700,000 for the 40 acres, and, which is ridiculous price, because if you go down to the Riverton project, which is very close, it's easily selling for a million dollars an acre. If you go, uh, if you go to Journey Mill Road, which has no residential zoning, it's strictly commercial, uh, it's a half a million dollars. So to, how anybody could value a 40-acre site in a park, uh, for, for under $700,000 is beyond my comprehension. All that being said, so we have a choice, when, when somebody wants to develop a piece of property, we can have input into the process and into the finished product, or we can fight it, we can lose, and then we lose control over what happens. So I would rather have control than no control. And this has been, you know, we are 100 days or so off from the election, Mr. Robinson is the strategist for one of the political parties in town, he's been eagerly looking for an issue. That being said, this may be the issue he's found, uh, I wish him, I wish him something, but, uh, anyway. Uh, that being said, we are doing what we think is right, uh, and what we think is in the best interest of Saroval. The, the 40 acres in Kennedy Park, if you had a legitimate appraisal, would, would probably easily be $20 million. That being said, um, about a half a million an acre, which, which is about right on residential property, um, which means we would, we would significantly raise taxes. That being said, we're, this year, we had a tax increase on the municipal, doesn't include the school, doesn't include the county portion of our taxes, just what it costs to run the borough, pick up the garbage, fix the potholes, provide police, fire for state. The average house was raised $30. So we have 300 employees, what we do up here on the council is, we run a service company. We're here to provide services. So nobody up here is taking envelopes, because I would be the first person to go to the prosecutor, uh, and, and in turn, if I was taking envelopes, I would expect them to go to the prosecutor. So, all, all that being said, nobody is here to do this for anything other than what is considered to, to be in the best interest of the borough with what we have at hand. So that being said, are there any more comments or questions from the governing body? There being none, I'll entertain a motion on this resolution.
I move that the resolution be approved on roll call vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilpersons, Novak.
Uh, yes, and I, I just wanna, I wanna make a statement. Kennedy just said, you know, about residential property, keeping in mind, this is not residential property, that's why the assessment is lower. By doing this, we are now rezoning this property residential, and I've heard for many, many years, I've been on the Open Space Committee since it was first formed in the 90s, uh, we, a lot of these, uh, developers, you know, they say that they don't want to sell to us, but the last time we went through this, we actually purchased from somebody from Kaplan, who said he didn't want to sell his property, guess what? We did make a deal with them, and we purchased four-plus acres next to Kennedy Park. So there, there is ways to talk to these developers to get them to do it. And in that particular case, and I really don't want to make this political, but Kennedy actually vetoed that sale of that property, and we had to overturn his veto. So this property, it's not residential, and this is, this is, this is informative and getting the people's opinion. It was a non-binding referendum, and there's no legal ramifications for this at all. The planning board doesn't even need our approval, much less the residents' approval. So saying that this is somehow, the boogeyman is gonna come, and it's gonna be worse than it is right now, I don't think it can be worse than it is right now. Thank you.
Falca.
Yes.
Kalisi.
Oh, based on the recommendation by our borough attorney, and the verbal presentation from our planners, Peter and Dan, you know, my vote is no.
Roberts.
Um, first, I concede that any question...
Speaker on?
It is. I concede any referendum that we put out would have 100% support, because nobody wants this. The problem I have is it will actually do nothing and raise expectations, especially since we have heard that this proposal may do more harm than good. Um, I concede voters will agree, the proposal does nothing to solve the problems, we've already heard that old politics don't work, and it may provide more energy for that developer to do more. So on that basis, no.
Tsarnarsky.
I'm also gonna be a no. I read everything last week, I voted no last week or two weeks ago, I'm voting no this time again.
Zabrowski.
Uh, no with comment. In the end, this referendum is not about open space, this referendum is about the Affordable Housing Plan and an element or a component to the plan that was put forward to the planning board. Unless it's gonna be amended, which I hear that might happen, which will open it to open space through eminent domain, which, quite frankly, we shouldn't be discussing today without attorney, without the planning, our planners and, and what have you, that just seems to me to be folly. I think what the real answer to this is, and I'm gonna make a recommenda, well, I'm gonna actually make a motion for resolution afterwards, is, listen, we're all angry. This affordable hous, and I've said this at the last meeting too, this affordable housing program no longer works. We all want to have affordable housing for the seniors, so they can stay in our town, for the young people, so they can grow their families, and certainly for special needs people, including veterans, so that they can have a home as well. And we put forth a plan based on the requirements that are necessary today. We're now 50 years into this program, as Ken said. We're overdeveloped. The process, the process that creates this now, creates so many market-rate homes to the percentage of affordable housing units, that it makes it almost ridiculous. We're all, not just Saroval, every town, every city is going through this. If you read the paper, you look on Facebook, you look wherever, everybody is angry, and I agree with them. I'm angry too. I don't want to see more housing, I don't want us, in particular, having to do way too many houses to meet those demands. I think the real answer, I think what the angry answer is from our residents, is that they don't like the plan, the program, not the plan, the program. And my resolution would be is, and not for referendum, because we're spending money ridiculously, because I think we understand what our people want already, and that is to say, we're done with this, to all our legislatures, legislators, Democrats, Republicans alike, that we just have had enough. You need to put a program together that doesn't allow this for all. To me, that's logical, that's the problem, not a piece of property, that's only part of what the issue is, but it's not the cause. The cause is the program, which at one point, again, I think was a great idea, but after you listen to Dan, and to Peter, and to Joe, tell me if it wasn't so complicated that at some point, you lost your train of thought, because I certainly did, and I've tried to follow, and I think I understand this pretty well, and boy, oh boy, it's not easy. Is that right, gentlemen? There has to be a better way, I'm gonna ask for a resolution afterwards, and I would hope that it would, rather, other towns, other cities would join us in this, because I think that's really the issue. So I apologize for talking too long, but I'm angry just as well as everybody else.
And your vote, John?
He said no.
I'm sorry, it's no.
All right, um, that being said, is there any other business before we go into closed session?
Well, I, I had amendments, but some, we didn't pass this one, there's no sense bringing up my amendments. I just would like to say, it just seems to me that we really don't want the opinions of the dopey a-holes that come to meetings.
Mayor, uh, if...
Go ahead, John.
If this has failed, then we can move on, I would like to present that resolution. Uh, I don't have the wording tonight, but I would ask Mr. Shadil to put that together, hopefully based upon what I said, and I would hope throughout the commi, the council, that everybody would in fact agree with that, because quite frankly, I think that is the sentiment of the residents of town. So I make that motion.
All right, that being said...
Second.
All in favor? Do you need a roll call? Roll call then.
Councilperson, Zabrowski.
Yes.
Falca.
Yes.
Kalisi.
Yes.
Novak.
What exactly are we voting on? What are we voting on?
Go ahead, John.
Well... Well, I think that's funny since, uh, your convoluted plan, you didn't really know. But the resolution is to express our anger and displeasure with the affordable housing program as it currently exists. Create, uh, and again, that we do support the fact that would be affordable housing within the township, but as the plan is created right now, with so many market rate houses to be built to get to the percentage of affordable rate housings that we disagree with this program and we're looking for our legislators to take the lead, to take the lead and recreate this program to go back to what it was supposed to do.
Basically what I said at the last meeting.
I don't think so, but.
Yeah, I did. I, I actually said at the last meeting, and not that it matters, that I myself, you know, feel that I've been negligent because I've sat up here a long time instead of just going along. I mean, the last time we really fought it and we were able to purchase some of the land that was supposed to be developed and we were able to lower the numbers. So there is a, a reason for that, but I should have at that point said that we start to have to petition the legislatures in New Jersey and the judges that are making a lot of these rules to, to, uh, to change these things instead of putting it all on the towns all the time. My fault.
Your vote?
Yes.
Roberts.
I completely agree with Councilman Zabrowski. We have been in basically a Ponzi scheme of housing through the state. And at the municipal level, there is very little that we can do about this. It really has to be addressed at the state level. I just had a conversation asking a question of our attorney earlier before this. And one of the things I wanted to consider is if zoning is changed at all for a piece of property, which is currently zoned at what's prime and it has a very low tax rate that someone's been holding on to for years, they've been paying about the same amount that someone's home is paying right now for 40 acres. And we are going to have the burden of the infrastructure for anything on that property. And there is nothing we can do about it at this level. It's really at the state level and we need to compel the state to change this. This is really hurting all of us. My answer is yes.
Tsunarsky.
I'm voting yes also. I'd like to challenge you legislat, legislators and see if we can get this to move forward.
I, I'd just like to say one more thing, although I really am in favor of this, that's going to do nothing to help us right now. If we had just moved forward on purchasing this property, that we wouldn't be in this position right now. We shouldn't, we should never be forced to, to change zoning, you know? And, and this will help us maybe in the future and it'll help all towns in the state of New Jersey. Not going to do a damn thing to help us by the time this would do anything. We're not going to be able to move in this town.
Okay. At this time, I'll take a motion to go into executive session.
Read the reso first. Whereas section eight of the Open Public Meetings Act, chapter 231, public law 1975 permits exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, now therefore it be resolved by the mayor and borough council, the borough of Saro, county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey as follows. The public portion of this meeting is hereby adjourned in order that the governing body may meet in closed private session for approximately five to 10 minutes to discuss the following matters, attorney-client privilege and RD litigation. Following the conclusion of said closed session, the governing body shall reconvene the open portion of this public meeting to consider any other matters which may be properly brought before it at this time. The nature and content of the discussion which occurs in closed session shall be made public at such time as the need, need for nondisclosure no longer exists. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to go into.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call.
Councilpersons, Roberts.
Yes.
Falca.
Yes.
Kalisi.
Yes.
Novak. Tsunarsky.
Yes.
Zabrowski.
Take a motion to go back into open?
Motion to go into open.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilpersons, Roberts.
Yes.
Falca.
Yes.
Kalisi.
Yes.
Novak. Tsunarsky.
Yes.
Zabrowski.
Yes.
Okay, at this time I'm going to open the public portion for questions or comments on any and all issues. Jim.
Questions, Mayor, did you say?
Questions or comments.
Oh, that's a good change in policy. First of all, I just want to point out, there are 15 people on a hot August night, 15 people here, and there would have been more here, a lot contacted me. I contacted the clerk to ask about the elevator. It's an important issue. That's why you had this number of folk, and these aren't the regulars that come out. And this would have been the perfect issue to allow people to comment through Zoom. But we have this policy that came in when you came in, Mayor. Council president, you're the president of the council, these are council meetings, you could make a motion to change that. Somebody contacted me through Facebook. I don't know the person, but a lot of people contact me who I don't know. And he said, can you look into the reason that the elevator has not been repaired? Isn't there a law that public buildings have to be handicapped accessible? I can't believe a part has been on order all this time. I just asked that question on behalf of that person. Maybe you'll answer when my time is up. Mayor, you did a good job in rewriting history. You were never a nuts and bolts guy. And we know the devil is in the details. During the Christie administration, Coa might have went away, the affordable housing laws didn't go away. The laws didn't go away, the laws were still in effect. And the reason we were sued is because we didn't abide by the laws for 20 years. So it was still the law. They didn't have the, they didn't have the council, but the law was still in effect and we ignored it. And that's why we are now building thousands of apartments in town because we were sued then. Now, with all due respect to the borough attorney, and I'm not going to mention the $10,000 contribution that his firm made before he was appointed, but, and I don't know if this is an issue or not, but I raised it. His comment certainly, and it was cited by some people who voted no on this, on putting this referendum on the ballot. His opinion was cited by at le, at least two council people, three council people. The reason they voted no, no. The fact that the borough attorney's law firm, up until recently, up until recently, represented Peter Mako. Is that a conflict? Would that have altered the opinion? Joe, you look like you don't know what I'm talking about. You don't, you know, well, your law firm represented Peter Mako. I don't know if they represented him in the suit. That was a suit, Mayor, where the judge said your public hearings were a sham and he turned over an ordinance and that's why 1.7 million square feet of warehousing is being built on Main Street. And your firm, the borough attorney's law firm, represented Peter Mako not three years ago, when he got that approval for the land immediately adjacent to these 40 acres. Now, is that a conflict? I don't know. I just ask it. I just ask it. So maybe we ought to take a look at that, you know? And Mayor, I've heard you say many times that the value of that property isn't what I say it is or isn't what the appraiser said it is. That's a certified appraisal that we got by a very respected appraiser. You never read it. You never read that appraisal. And in fact, I'm not going to mention her name, but a council person as recently as two weeks ago asked me for that appraisal and I said to that council person, I sent this to everyone in April and you never read it. Well, you know what the borough says that wor, that land is worth? The borough, the borough, one point, I think it's, I have to do the math, 295 and I think we're 30, 34.85 is our ratio, I think something like that, close to 35, right? And if I, so the borough says that property is worth about 1.16, about 1.2 million. Let's say the borough says that 40 acres is worth about 1.2 million. Anybody who read the appraisal would know how much of it can't be built. I do want to ask about the, uh, the DuPont suit, what we know about that, what area in town are impacted, what we're going to do about it, what are we going to tell the people? Mayor, I want to thank you. I have to agree with you. The very legislators that Donna, you're criticizing, the mayor praised, um, at the senior event, he said they are wonderful legislators, they're friends of his, they're friends of Saro. That might not be political, that might be because of his state job, I don't know. But in any case, I thought it was nice of you to say when some people are taking unfair shots. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
And can we get an answer to the question about whether or not that's a legal conflict for the attorney to represent Peter Mako and the borough and give the opinion that we can't have a referendum?
Jim, sit down, please.
Well, we'll, you said, we can ask questions. That was a question.
Your time is up, Jim. Please sit down.
Questions imply answers.
Please sit down, Jim.
Will, will there be an answer to that question?
Not, maybe next meeting. Come back next meeting. You, you generally don't miss them.
Do you think it's a conflict, Mayor?
Sit down, Jim.
Do you think it's a conflict for the borough attorney to also be Peter Mako's attorney?
Would you ask Mr. Robinson? He, he, he's dying for me to have a police officer escort him to his.
They're not going to sit me down because he knows that I, I'm just doing anything inappropriate.
Yeah. Well, he's just rude, crude, and ill-bred. Ken?
Ken Olshusky, Saro. Uh, I want you to know, Mayor, I take great offense at, uh, the comments you made about me earlier. Uh, you increased my age by several years and, uh, I don't think that's right. I don't do that to you. As a matter of fact, I don't do anything to you personally, Mayor. I want to say right now, despite the speech you made, uh, which is total nonsense and most of the things you say are just full of lies, Mayor, everybody knows that. I have nothing against you as a person. You never, let me say it twice, Kennedy O'Brien never did anything to me personally. And I don't think I ever did anything to you personally, Mayor, either. What I stand here and talk about are issues and the borough and your actions and the things that you've done. And I've done them over and over. You know why? Because people forget and we need to remind them all the time. Yeah. I, and Mr. Rob just talked about one eliminating Zoom, how, how that affects a lot of people who can't make meetings, who are, are lesser people for medical, physical reasons. I didn't tell you to do that, Mayor. Uh, I had no influence on you. Calling people a-holes that attend meetings. I'm really proud that you did that, Mayor. That's really, you should be proud of yourself for doing that. Uh, yeah, so that's the kind of thing that makes me stand here and criticize you. Cause if you did it when I sat there for the six years and you were mayor, I would have got up and left the dais because I wouldn't tolerate that from anybody. So yeah, I'm glad you're shaking your head. I hope you agree with it, Mayor. Calling people that attend meetings, don't be people with no lives. Do you know anything about democracy, Mayor? This is democracy. This is how it works. You've tried to restrict it, you've tried to take it away, you reduce the meetings at the speaking time from five minutes to three until you found out people complained how ridiculous that was. But you're anti-democratic, Mayor. You're anti-democracy. The firehouse preservation that I talked about before, the people, the people in the historical society, they're, they're people that have been in the community a long time. Uh, they're pillars of the community and you, you tried to fight them, being apparently somebody aggravated you or, or didn't kiss your ring. And so you've done everything you could until, until the voters jammed it right to you and you got beat by a two to one margin, Mayor. That's how the people feel about the things you've done. And you're still trying to spite not only the voters, but the historical society because you won't declare that historical site. So they have tried, they have tried to get this done so they could save the borough money and they could get, they could get money. You have violated that. You have ignored it. You won't do it because you're spiting them. You're not spiting them, you know? You're spiting, you're spiting every taxpayer in town, Mayor. That's who you're spiting. Trying to get rid of the shade tree commission because probably somebody said something there you didn't like until you found out that there were so many people objected to that, uh, your people here had to withdraw it. And now you got this thing about restricting, restricting volunteers, restricting them to borough residents. That's really, that's really big. You know, the people of South Amboy and Morgan and Mechanicsville, how intertwined they are with the residents of Saro. And you won't let, you don't want to let people come in here and do things on boards and commissions for $0. That's the kind of thing you've done, Mayor. And now, now you're trying to, now this body is trying to make excuses for the affordable housing that, you know, that's just nonsense what you've said. The law is the law, Mayor. You violated the law. I'm just pointing out the things you've done. You violated the law, you and your planning board. And you had people like Donna, uh, trying to say, oh, blaming this on, uh, other people in the legislature who you, as, as Mr. Rob said, you praised all the time, you praised. I could tell you one that I praised is Juan Carlos, who, uh, works for Yvonne Lopez. I've gone to him numerous times to, to get things for, not for me personally, I don't need anything, but for friends and, and information. And they've always been right on top of everything. So, uh, I just wanted to stand here and tell you what a phony you are, how you make up lies. And I've got plenty to say, Mayor. I'll be back, believe me. I'll tell you a little bit.
I know you'll be back. You've got nothing else going on, Ken. That's why you'll be back.
I'm going to tell you a little bit about prosecutor the next time.
And always remember, this is as close to the dais as the people of Saro will allow you to get.
Yeah.
So thank you for your comments.
They're not allowing you too much, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you for your comments.
They're not allowing you too much.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, nice to meet you. My name is Natalia Knudjewski. I live, um, on, oh, sorry.
I'm, I'm an old guy losing my hearing, dear.
You got it. So I live on Burrell Square and I just wanted to raise like some potential improvements to Saro that might benefit like the people who live here. Um, I live on Jackson Ave and there's a small park there. And I like to go to parks to take care of my mental health and like my wellness. So I believe that it would be a good idea to establish like a walkway path in that park. It's very rocky and difficult to walk on and I think that would help like not only the residents that live around there, but also like for personal reasons to, uh, enjoy that park better. I also noticed at Kennedy Park, um, it's a good park, but there's not enough trees along the walkway. I feel like it would benefit from, um, more trees. So individuals who walk there could immerse themselves more into this concept of forest bathing, which is very good for a person's health. And I noticed that there's a lot of like geese poop on the walkway and like, um, that kind of things that makes it difficult to walk. And that might be a good improvement as well to reduce, um, either have someone go around and clean it up more frequently. And that, that, that's all I have to say.
Couple of things. Glenn, if you would, if you'd have Richie look at, uh, Jackson Avenue Park, uh, for, for a walkway. You're talking on the perimeter?
Yeah, it's a, yeah, it's a small park.
Okay. Um, and then the things, for all the time that I've sat up here, we have repeatedly planted trees in Kennedy Park. The problem there is, one, it's clay. Uh, that, that's an old clay pit.
Okay.
And, and two, we, we planted trees there numerous times. Basically they die because the, the roots get saturated with too much water, the water, there's no aquifer there. We'll, we'll take a look at it again. But that's, it's not that we haven't tried over the years.
Right.
But, um, that's been the result of, of our trying. Uh, so if you would, if you would have a look at that, um, there are times that's, it's really an absolute, fall and spring. It's a lovely, lovely park, Kennedy Park. Uh, as far as the geese goes, it's, it's a repetitive problem. So years ago, let's say back in the nineties, we used to have people come and, and it was a company and basically they, they would shoot the geese and, and they would bring the, the geese up to soup kitchens in Newark and, and feed the hungry. We then would, would go and we would, addling the eggs, you, you basically find the geese nests and then you would take the egg and you would coat it in a vegetable oil. The gee, uh, the egg would never mature, it would never hatch, so you'd skip the generation. Um, we, we have an active and ongoing, uh, goose problem. So for the last number of years, essentially the input is they don't want to kill the geese. And so we, we've hired special dogs that chase the flocks of geese. And what we found is the geese will just basically fly far enough that the dog gets tired. So they'll go from Kennedy Park to the middle school, Kennedy Park to the high school playing fields, Kennedy Park to the Shoprite Plaza. We just keep trying. It's not that we ignore it, we just keep trying.
Right.
I deputized one of the third grade classes at Arla School to find solutions 20 years ago when Mrs. Comerford was the teacher and, and Mrs. Brady were the teachers. I did the same thing and the kids came up with wonderful solutions. The poop is a problem because they eat and they defecate.
Yeah.
That's what they do. They're like, anyway, we, because of the work the third graders did, we bought a goose poop scooper, which is a machine that goes and it scoops up. But you have to do it when it's dried out for several days. You can't do wet poop, otherwise it clogs up the machine. It's an, it's an ongoing process that we're constantly, constantly working on.
Okay.
And since the, the consensus is they don't, they don't want to slaughter the geese, it's a process, it's a longer process. But it's, it's ongoing and we don't stop.
Okay.
All right?
And for the decision about the Jackson Park walkway?
Yes.
Should, will that be like the answer, the, will the answer be given like next council meeting or?
We'll, we'll have to take a look at doing that and seeing what's available down there. We've got about four major park renovation products going on now for this year that have been funded through a series of grants. We'll have our Parks Department take a look at it and try to come up with some ideas there. I don't know if it's big enough for a walkway. I don't know what we could bring to bear there, but we'll certainly take a look at it.
Okay.
You, you can give us, you can give Glenn a call.
Okay.
And, but your timing's a little off because the budget for the year is set.
Oh, I see.
But let's take a look at it. Sometimes you can do a lot with a little.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
But you start.
Yeah.
All right?
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Yes, ma'am.
Hello. Um, I apologize, this is my first time doing this.
Okay, so if you.
So unfamiliar with the process.
Your name and the street you live on?
Taylor Donnelly, Mohawk Lane. So I did have a question going back to the open space issue. My question is, what if any infrastructure improvements are planned for town, especially for this large influx of people that are obviously going to be coming with not only these potential apartments potentially being built, but in addition to the ones that are already in the process or very, you know, soonly opening? I ask mainly because, you know, just about five days ago, we had that crazy rainstorm and it was, obviously it was probably a more specific situation with the amount of rain.
It was more water than the sewer system could deal with.
Yeah.
We had two and a half inches in 30 minutes.
Yeah. So that is my other question as well, though, especially with potentially removing even more trees, you know, from behind Kennedy Park in that whole area. Obviously, trees prevent runoff. So with removing all of those as well, are there any planned improvements to, I guess namely the sewer system in town? Sorry. Are there any planned improvements namely to the sewer system in town? Because I worry that with specifically removing all of these trees, which will then cause more and more runoff, what then are we going to do as residents of the town? You know, if my basement is flooding, you know, that's my own problem, but if it is caused due to other factors throughout town, I'm not really sure how that's fair to the other residents, especially that are living very close to where these planned projects are going to be taking place. So are we going to have the sewers?
You have, you have three things. You have fresh water and then, and then you have waste, storm wastewater, which is the water from rain on the streets. All right, so that's a separate sewer system. And then you have the regular wastewater that comes out of your bathroom and your kitchen and that kind of stuff. So we own our own sewer system, we own our own water system. It's an ongoing process. Usually in that business, they plan out 20 years, 25 years. It's a very long range planning. Occasionally, you'll run into weather conditions, which it's such a peak demand. When, when Hurricane Sandy came through, we had an 18-foot wall of water come down Weber Avenue and it's impossible to plan for that. That being said, the other day, we, we had, was it two and a half inches in 30 minutes? Which exceeded the capacity of the storm, of the storm system. That being said, that once the downpour abated, the system kicked in and, and the waste, the storm water was taken away. Did your neighborhood flood?
Um, just across from my neighborhood, I know Johnson's Lane was severely flooded as well as, I mean, lower elevation places obviously were more flooded, but I know over by the Parkway, it was very flooded. Johnson's Lane was like completely wiped out, so, and that's.
Where, where on Johnson's Lane? Because I, I live in Woodside.
Literally just the whole.
Down by the cemetery?
Yeah, like a little bit before this, between the cemetery and the pizza place by the intersection.
Where, where it connects into Washington Road?
Yeah.
Turns around?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We'll have that, we'll have the fellows look at it. There are a couple of things. Right, right where Washington Road crosses Journey Mill?
Oh, it floods.
Yeah, it just exceeds the capacity of, of the storm sewer system when you get an aberration like that.
So are there plans potentially in the future to upgrade the system? Because every, it seemingly every time it rains now, it rains miles a minute, so.
As we go through and do road reconstruction projects, we address the underground infrastructure at that time.
Okay.
There's a couple in the hopper for this year, off the top of my head, I don't remember. I mean, there are trouble spots in town. We're having a problem in Melrose and one of the older sections of Melrose that's been perennial. Engineers are working on that and it's going to have to be addressed moving forward. But as they open up roads and do a complete reconstruction, they redo the underground infrastructure and bring them up to more contemporary standards. You've got to understand, a lot of this stuff's been underground for 80, 100 years, so.
Yeah.
We don't open the roads that often to go that deep, but we, it's a work in progress and it's cyclic.
Right, okay. I just wanted to bring that up as a potential concern. Also, I'm sorry, I know that I'm very low on time, but as a, a separate issue she reminded me. I was wondering if there would potentially be any, I know that you just said with the budget, maybe for next year then instead, but any improvements to the dog park that's over by the S-turns and the horse farm? Only because it's not, it leaves something to be desired, I'll say.
Was it, does it need to be cleaned up or refurbished or both?
It's a little bit of both, like especially when you look at neighboring towns like the Edison-Matuchin Dog Park is like, you know, there's not much there, but it's much nicer where the ones that we have over by the S-turns are extremely muddy. You have the water pump that just gets mud everywhere.
What would you, what would you like to see?
I don't know if maybe turf is an option, turf is an option over there potentially?
Dog park?
Yeah, there's plenty of other dog parks in neighboring towns that have that, so.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah, the Edison-Matuchin Dog Park, Alex's Paw Park in Homedale, there's many options where they've done that and it's a big open space as well. So I just figured maybe we could look into it.
Would you leave your contact information with Nicole? Because I'm gonna appoint you to finding what you'd like.
Gladly.
All right.
Happily accept it, no problem.
I would, I always find that people with a passion find the best solutions.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor, could I, Mayor, could I say one thing? Excuse me, can you come back for one second? As far as the infrastructure goes for houses and everything else, the existing infrastructure is there. Say it's a 30-inch pipe. If they're putting 700 homes in, in a certain area and engineers decide that that pipe's not large enough to accommodate them, that goes with potable water, storm sewer and sanitary sewer, they would have to upgrade that before they would be approved to, to even build it. So they're not going to put something on something that it's not going to be able to accept the water. The infrastructure would have to be repaired first, if that answers your question.
It does. I, not to, this isn't directly, sorry, this isn't directed specifically at you by any means, it's just, obviously, New Jersey, we're the most densely populated state in the country. We're seeing these issues, it's not only a Saro issue, we're seeing it all over the state, like especially up north, northwest, Morris County, that area, where as much as I would like to think that that is the truth, I think that we're seeing a lot of other issues pop up in infrastructure throughout the state. You know, the potholes, there's flooding all over. You know, I know it's not specifically a Saro issue, but it's just a concern that I felt should be raised because even though it's not a problem right now, if these go up and, you know, everything seems to be approved and everything is fine until that, you know, the next Hurricane Sandy rolls through, which is, you know, I'm not even 30 yet and in my lifetime, we've experienced like the amount of one in a thousand year storms that I've heard about, especially within the last six, seven, eight years. It's not stopping anytime soon. So we, as a community, need to be better prepared, not only for ourselves, but to protect our neighbors and community from unnecessary property damage. Because, you know, I don't know about everybody here, but I certainly don't want to have to pay for property damage if I don't have to. So that's just, that was just why I wanted to bring it up. Because, you know, like I know that you said that it won't be approved and I understand that, but sometimes I feel like things that objectively probably shouldn't happen still end up happening. And, you know, I'm not saying that it's one person or another's fault, but these things are obviously happening in other towns and there are repercussions already playing out. So I would like to avoid any repercussions like that in, you know, my hometown, if it can be avoided. So.
Don't stop coming.
Okay, thank you.
All right, okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or, or comments? There being no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to close the public Is there a second?